Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 28, 2012 meeting of the Gothstown Planning Board. I'd like to begin with introduction, starting with Brian.
I'm Brian Rose. I'm the Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Brian Hanson.
Richard Meany.
John Heikel, Vice Chair.
Galen Brook, Recording Secretary.
Tim Redmond, Chairman.
Barbara Brifin.
Phil Devance, Selectman.
Mark Warden.
Simone Doohy, Alternate.
Thank you, everyone. So the meeting was called order at 7:02. All right, the first order of business tonight is the minutes of June 14, 2012. Does anybody have any corrections or additions?
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion by Phil, seconded by Richard, for approval. Does anyone have any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion to accept them as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, Chair votes yes. If anyone is here tonight for the presentation by the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission for the Piscataquog Watershed Land Conservation Plan and for the Piscataquog River Management Plan Update 2010 that has been postponed until July 26, we will hear that on July 26. And everyone got an updated version of the upcoming minutes, meetings, rather, on the table tonight. It supersedes the one that came in your packet. Very briefly, we have some correspondence and FYIs. We have a copy of a New Hampshire DOT driveway permit for Brian Briggs. The address is 273 Mast Road, MAP 26, Lot 23. He will be coming in with a site plan for a future equipment rental business to be located at that site. There's also an NHDES Complete Forestry Notification stating that it is all right to begin the timber harvesting on the Bellevue property at 260 East Dunbarton Road, MAP 9, Lot 99. And there is an NHDES Supply Line Newsletter. So those items are available in the packet if anybody wants to have a look at them. Brian, do we have anything do we have to cover before we go to our first order of business?
Yes, I actually submitted out a new correspondence page, and it's got one item. It's a bond reduction.
Okay.
It's for Elva Drive for the road bond that had been submitted.
Okay.
The Selectmen actually accepted this back in November of 2011, November 21. And for whatever reason, I don't believe it ever got taken care of for the bond reduction. They had sent me something back in March, and I never followed through with getting the Planning Board to take action to reduce the bond. So that's why it's here today for you. The current bond amount is at $77,291.09, and they're just looking to reduce it down to $62,632.68. That's essentially 10% of the total project cost or total bond amount that was originally required. And that's, that 10% is considered a maintenance surety that would be retained until two years from the date of acceptance of the road, which would go until November 21, 2013. So my recommendation is that the Planning Board authorize the reduction down to $62,632.68.
Thank you, Brian. Does anybody have any questions for Brian on the subject matter?
Question.
Barbara?
This was back in November. It is now June. Have you received any word from DPW that there's any reason that there should be a different action at this point? We've had a winter resping, and they haven't had anything brought to their attention in regards to issues with the road?
No, I did contact them, and they had sent me the same memo that they had sent me before, just saying this is, this is what we recommend. So, and that memo is attached in your, in your little packet there.
You gave us, yeah.
Anything else? Does anybody have any questions for Brian on this matter? Is everything in order, Brian, then?
As far as I know.
Okay, well, then we'll...
I'll make a motion to approve the reduction.
Second.
Motion by Phil Devance, seconded by Mark Warden, to approve the bond reduction to the amount set forth on the recommendation from Brian. Any discussion of the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, and Chair votes yes. All right, then, I guess we'll move on to new business. We have MAP 9, lots 25-3 and 25-4. It's a completeness review, final subdivision plan review hearing for a proposed lot line adjustment. Carolyn Henry Demelli and Catherine McNeil and Douglas Diodati. I said that right. 34 and 30 Elva Drive Zoned Agricultural. Brian, could you give us a rundown on this, please?
Essentially, this is a lot line adjustment on Elva Drive, which is funny that we are doing the bond reduction tonight for Elva Drive, too. But they are looking to do an even swap of land, so it's not going to be any different acreages on the lots. In speaking to them, they are looking to just have that, a little bit extra frontage, and also to kind of hopefully, if the neighbors decided to put up a fence on their lot, that it would, wouldn't go so far in front of their house. The property owners from MAP 9, Lot 25-4 are the ones that are concerned about that, where they have a very small frontage there on the corner there. And so the lot line, as it currently exists, juts out in, almost to the middle of, in front of their house, and where it would end up would be kind of perpendicular to the cul-de-sac and allow them a little bit more frontage and a little better ability to have their lot open up to visibility. So that's essentially what it is. At this point in time, I had received a comment from the Fire Department asking for clarification on setbacks of the propane tanks that were currently buried. I also did receive a comment from Megan on the well locations and whether or not the current well locations were going to have enough of a radius and whether or not there would be a need for a liability waiver form to be done between property owners. Those were essentially the comments that I'd received from departments. But at, at the time when I wrote the report, I didn't have any information back from the engineer, and so I made the recommendation that we do the acceptance tonight and that we take some extra time and iron out those couple of issues and then, and then come back to the, to the Board with recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Brian. Do any Board members have any questions for Brian before we...
I do.
Phil?
Thank you. Brian, this is a new subdivision, as was pointed out earlier, because of the acceptance of the road very recently. And these were approved, these two lots that we're discussing tonight have come to this Board with drawings that we have approved. They, I guess, the concern that I have is why we aren't looking at the plans that we approved with the new proposed line? And the reason why I say that is the very question that you or Megan asked about the well radii. They aren't shown on this, but they're shown on the plans that we've approved, along with the disposal system, and a little bit more detail than what's on here. So I guess that's my question, is why aren't we looking at what's been approved by this Board within the last few years? As these lots would just, the proposed lot line change?
Are you asking if, why aren't, why didn't you have a copy of that in front of you to compare it to? Or, I'm not, I'm not sure what your question is.
Well, usually when somebody comes in with a change to a site plan that we approved, they'll come in with the site plan that we have approved and show the proposed lot line and what it's doing. And I guess the concern that I have is that these very questions that are being brought up, those aren't depicted, well radii are not depicted on here. We don't approve a plan without the well radii.
Well, that's something that we can ask the developer to show. I mean, that's...
Phil, on the, when we get a subdivision plan, we get proposed house block, you know, the 80 by 100 block. We get a 4,000 square foot septic area set aside, and we also get a proposed well location. And in a lot of cases, they never put the well exactly where it's supposed to go.
Right, that's true.
The wells actually are not in the same location as where it was on the subdivision.
So if these wells are physically located by Mike as part of his survey of the property, this is a better depiction of the site than we would get if we had the original plan.
I agree.
But we should have the radii shown again.
Yeah, I think, I think the well radius as, should come back on the plan.
Well, question.
Go ahead, Barbara.
Both lots show a well.
Mm-hmm.
The, the legend is not the same as that on the upper left of this corner. So, Brian, do you know what well is shown on each of these lots? Is that the proposed from the original drawings?
The two wells that are in the back on these lots?
Yeah.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Those are not proposed wells, I don't believe. Those are existing wells.
They're in.
Yeah.
Those are the existing wells?
Those are the existing wells.
Weird.
All right, can you, can you just, do you, do you see, Mike, how the legend isn't the same as the top left?
Right. I think that's, that's just because of the scale of the...
Oh, I can't see the W in there? Or the, or my age? That was very kind, Mike.
No, it's, 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 it's half scale.
There's a, there's a big one in front of you right there.
Yeah, but in the legend...
Okay.
Okay.
The symbols are different instead of a dot.
You can't really tell unless you, all right, but it is, those are the actual wells.
Yeah, the well radius is just an oversight.
Okay, so that's easy enough to do.
You can see it on, you can see it on the big one, though.
No, I can't.
On this, you can't see the...
No, I can tell it here. I can't tell it here.
It says well.
Oh, all right.
So I couldn't tell whether it was what he observed or, thank you.
So, well, any other questions for Brian before we open up the meeting? At this point, we'll ask the applicant or his representative to come forward and make a presentation.
Well...
Prior, excuse me, Mike.
Want me to make a motion?
Ah, we need to make a motion for the...
I'll make a motion, due to the location of the lots as to town borders and transportation, the impact on transportation and anticipated emissions, proximity to aquifers or surface waters and municipal boundaries and shared facilities. No regional impact exists in this application for a lot line adjustment.
Second. Can you do two while you're at it? On the site plan, right, on the second page.
Oh, the site plan, I meant the site plan. I, no, I'm going to do this lot line adjustment plan as a separate motion.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to find a plan that does not have a regional impact, seconded by Phil. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes.
I'll make a motion that this lot line adjustment plan is complete and ready for review, and as not part of the motion, I will note that all the little boxes are checked off on a whole little floor.
Thank you for that motion, seconded by Phil. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, Chair votes yes. Now, Mike, now you, I would ask you to come forward and make a...
I really don't have anything to ask. Brian laid out very well, and it being my wife's birthday.
Oh, you know where you want, you'd rather go home?
Well, yeah. No, Brian, he, he said it. The original house, for the record...
For the record.
The house location was not supposed to be...
Excuse me, sir, for the record.
Michael Dahlberg, Lance Verre.
Thank you.
I did the original survey for the subdivision. He has built a lot line adjustment. I'm very familiar with the site. The original house location on the subdivision plan was supposed to be in the back corner, in the middle of the lot, I guess, kind of where the septic is, kind of like this house would be up here. But it got moved up front, and no one realized until after the house was built, and we set the, we set the monuments, that the lot line is right off the front, at the front entrance. So the...
The utilities, if I can interrupt.
The utilities. So their abutter to the south has graciously agreed to do a swap. So that's, that's the crux of it. Can't be further subdivided, no new lots, just strict. Propane tanks are far enough off the lot lines. We've took care of that today. I think we're pretty much, we're set to go.
Do the applicants have anything to add? If they do, please come forward and identify yourself for the record.
I'm Carol Demelli.
Henry Demelli.
Okay.
And I just would like to landscape between the property lines. I don't want to, even though we get along with our neighbors and we have no bonds, it's his birthday tonight, and that's why Michael's not here. And, you know, they have no bonds about it either, but should they sell the house? I really don't want to give it to anyone in my front yard, or I don't want somebody putting up whatever. I would like the ability to be able to landscape what is sitting in the front of my property. We, when we realized we built the house, it was the winter, couldn't find because of the snow that we had last year, as you all know. They plowed, we had, you know, nine-foot piles of snow, and it wasn't until the next-door neighbors were building the house that they actually discovered where that property line was, even though we could see it. We never were really paying attention to this, you know, eight and a half by 11 piece of paper that we had. We've had a lot of other things going on in our lives, and so it really kind of pushed back. And I got to the point where saying, I need to get this resolved in my life so that I know that when I look out my front door, I'm not looking at my neighbor's property who has a young child. So I really, I know you've got this thing till September, but for me, it's been something that has bothered me from day one. And I will say, we are going to be paying most taxes on that street as it is. You will be hearing from me next December on that, but, you know, it's a, it's a nice house, and I just don't like having that. I have to deal with the electric. I don't want to have to deal with the property line there.
We've been progress for 20 years, and this vicinity, we moved a mile or two, and so we, existing ranches have made more sense as we grow older, kind of things. But the utilities is something that's not true.
Not them.
But the design, you look at the front door, and there's the utilities. Oversight, major oversight.
Okay.
That's beside the point.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mike Dahlberg at this point?
Come on, Barbara, you haven't usually have something.
Oh, stop. I heard it was your birthday. I'm being nice.
No, it was my wife's birthday.
Oh, your wife's birthday. I'm being nice.
It's the neighbor's birthday.
Two questions next time, Mike. Oh, that's right, you and I both.
She's got to be 30 now, all right?
Brian, your recommendation is to move this out. Do you have a reason why we should be moving this out?
Well...
It seems so straightforward.
It does. You know, I didn't, I didn't put together standard conditions of approval. If the Board wants to kind of come up with them, we can do, we can make a recommendation at this point in time, you know, I, and just make sure that they show well lines or, you know, well radius lines and do that. That was the reason why I had recommended that we, that we push it out. One, because I hadn't heard anything until just tonight on the, on the locations of the fire of the propane tanks. And then, two, just, you know, I wanted to make sure that we had all, all that stuff in line before we approved it.
Barbara?
Well, I heard Mike say that they went out to verify the propane tanks tonight, but I didn't hear from the Fire Department. What, what exactly have you heard officially?
I mean, I, I just heard from Mike Dahlberg what he had said, so I haven't talked to Bill Connor about anything as far as his approval on this.
They're actually moving the property line away from the propane.
Well, it moves it away from one and closer to another.
Closer to another.
The NFP 58 Stere is a buried 500-gallon tank up to a 2,000-gallon tank. The edge of the tank has to be 10 feet off the lot line. What we did today was we confirmed the size of the tank, the gallons, which gives us the physical dimensions. We know where, based on the survey, where the fill or spout is. So we, on the plans that Brian has, we drafted the actual size of the tank on the plan, confirmed that both tanks, and we saw, we conform to the 10-foot setback. In fact, they almost doubled, doubled that. I guess, I should get a check off from the Fire Department anyways, as a matter of procedure. I don't think I'm going to take Lieutenant Connor more than five minutes to look at that plan and confirm that and send Brian an email. I'll leave that to the Board.
All right. Brian, the abutter, we have an abutters list, so this was properly noticed for public hearing tonight.
It was.
So at this point, I'm going to open the public hearing. Anybody in the audience which to make comments or speak to this application? Seeing no one here tonight, I will close the public hearing. If we can make an appropriate list of conditions, I think it can be handled administratively. Does anybody on the Board have any opinion different than that?
Nope. Sounds good.
Looking around, have I seen all heads nodding yes, or some nodding no?
No, yes, yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Phil? Okay. So let's come up with a list of conditions. What's the proper word, Barbara, subsequent? Is that the word, after?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the lot line adjustment plan. Subject to, prior to final approval and signature, the standard conditions in regards to stamps and other certifications of the plan. Brian, you have that standard language, right? Somewhere in that list.
Yes, stamps and signatures would be required on the plan. The plan has to be according to the NAD 83 and NAVD 88, vertical datum, horizontal and vertical datums. It's, it's got to have, we, we have to receive an AutoCAD file of the plan on that datum. I don't know if there are...
Monuments.
Monuments to be set and certification of bounds.
Certification of monuments.
I think it's, I think it's standard language. It's a standard paragraph that appears on every plan that we approve. So as long as Brian can provide the necessary language, language.
I think Brian was just trying to get it onto the record for the meeting.
Yeah, I just want it to be on the record. That way, it's not questionable what I'm putting on there as a condition afterwards. So I think those are the standard ones, certification of bounds and the monuments to be set.
And the plan to be submitted is to include the appropriate designation of the location of the propane tanks and compliance with required rules as determined by the Fire Department, which can be administratively determined, and also to show the actual wells and setbacks as appropriate, subject to administrative approval.
Wells and radius, radii or setbacks?
I'd like to also ask you to include in your motion, Brian, Barbara, that if the well radius on 24, 925-4 does not meet the requirement, that we receive a well waiver, radius waiver from 925-3, if it's going to cross the lot line.
Okay. I mean, I don't think it's going to be a problem, but yeah.
Because we did do that on lots down the road. When they wanted to move their lots, we made them give us radius waivers on the lots coming up on the right-hand side as part of that project.
I think that was a different type of boundary that they were setting, so that this is as to each other, but because this actually, the waiver of well radii, but it would be a private property owner right as to each, each other's lot, and I don't actually think that's appropriate.
Well, we're approving a lot line that's going to come closer to the well on 25-4. So if the radius was on, completely on the lot prior to the moving it, then we need to include a waiver.
All right, I see it from that standpoint.
From that standpoint.
Okay.
Because of variation.
All right, those are the major ones I see.
We have a motion on the floor. Mike, we really can't talk right now. So, Barbie, is your motion complete to your satisfaction?
At this moment in time?
Have we forgotten anything as a group? Have Barbie forgotten anything to include in Barbie's motion?
No, I'll second it.
With the understanding those are to be done before signature. Those are not subsequent, those are precedent.
Those are precedent, precedent.
The only one that would be a subsequent is the certification of bounds. They're typically set after.
So do we need to have the motion read back, or are we satisfied that it's all inclusive?
I hope not. Yeah, I think it's available, make a difference. I get it.
I follow that.
We're good. There's, there's going to be some that are precedent.
If you look in the minutes that were just approved, June 14, page seven and eight, on page seven of eight, there's the phrase for the digital files, the AutoCAD. Appropriate professional stamps and signatures, professional digital files, AutoCAD.
So you've got that. And then you've got some conditions that were precedent, precedent, and some...
Yeah, the, the well radius, the...
And the, and the subsequent is the professional bounds.
Right.
Mount, location of the bounds and all.
Right.
Okay?
The waiver.
And the waiver. You got that part? The wall radius waiver?
Got it.
All right, is anything else that motion needs to include at this time?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Phil. Any discussion on, on the motion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, Chair votes yes. Motion passes.
The point of clarification, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mike, please.
On the protective well radii, according to the state regulations, you can't build a septic system within 10 feet of the lot line. So that protective well radii actually can't go 10, less than 10 feet onto the abutters property without a waiver.
Okay.
Just, I know it's closed, but it's under 10 feet. We don't have to do anything for the state.
Will you scale these radiuses on, on the final plan and make sure it's shown on there?
It will be shown.
And if it does exceed the 10 feet, you will execute the waiver?
Yes.
Are we, do we give him relief from that waiver?
That was an administrative decision, and I understand that, Brian understands what's necessary.
So if he meets the letter of the law and he falls under it, then you can not require the waiver? As set forth by NHDES. Okay? Anything else on this matter? I think we're done with it. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Good luck with your landscaping.
Like the way they handled that with their neighbors.
Brian, just for curiosity's sake, the driveway permit that was issued to, that we talked about earlier in the correspondence and FYI, where is that lot in relation to some of the other lots down on Mast Road? Do you know where 273 Mast Road is?
That's for Brian Briggs?
Yeah.
That's the one just west of Irving Oil.
Is that the little lot? Or is that the big one in the back?
That's that skinny one that fronts where they, I believe that's the skinny one where they asked for the conceptual on the, on being able to do the equipment, right?
Anybody remember that lot like I do? That's the lot we approved for the shed guy to put up sheds on.
Yep.
Oh, oh, okay.
The one that has the vegetable stand out, front of the dilapidated...
Okay, or by the propane.
In front of this chain link fence which separates the propane facility from Mast Road.
I, well, I'm guessing that that's it. Don't quote me on that because-
I would hope it's bigger than that if he's gonna want a equipment rental business.
It's supposed to be coming back for site plan if they go to that location, so I don't, maybe I'm totally wrong.
It must be the propane lot in the back because that's a fenced-in lot.
Perhaps.
So, we'll find out when he comes back. I was just curious what the location was.
It could be the house for sale. I mean, you don't know unless you know.
Two eighty-three, it's two seventy-three.
Two seventy-three.
Two seventy-three?
Two seventy-three Mast Road LLC, then it says seven thirty-three Mast Road. So, I don't know which is which here. Doesn't matter. We'll find out when he bring it in.
I don't believe it's the house, the lot with the house for sale. When they came to the CBA, he said that they had considered that and there were some issues with it, so.
Alright, do we have any other business before the board tonight? We have an upcoming meeting on your new agenda on July the twelfth for a conditional use permit hearing for an interior lit sign. And then we have the twenty-sixth meeting. Is there any way we can consolidate them, Brian, and skip a meeting?
Yes.
If we have one item on agenda for each of two meetings.
Want to cancel the second meeting? Well, gosh, I just told-
You can't move the second movement, you can't move the twenty-sixth forward to the twelfth because that's contingent on a conservation meeting the night before.
Are they planning on talking to the Conservation Commission on that night?
Yes, as far as I know, yes. So, the twelfth could go to the twenty-sixth, but my guess is the twelfth wants to get that dealt with.
When did you get the application?
Or you move the twenty-sixth to the first meeting. We usually don't have a meeting in August, so.
No.
Brian, could you-
No, we have one meeting in August.
So, maybe we have-
The first meeting in August.
So, maybe the twenty-sixth gets moved to the first meeting in August. It can't come forward from what I understand.
See if, Brian, could you contact the applicant for July the twelfth and find out if they would mind moving theirs to the twenty-sixth?
And then if not, we'll see if you can move the twenty-sixth to the first one in August.
I just don't see the point of having meetings if we have one conditional use permit to discuss here. Everybody come all the way in here for one conditional use permit.
Or we could just make the decision to move it and, you know, they'd be two weeks later.
Which one, Brian?
The sign.
If the sign, I would propose that we consolidate the twelfth meeting into the twenty-sixth and have a twenty-sixth meeting only.
Are they waiting on us to get approval so they can get a sign made?
Patty hasn't done her notifications yet on that, so she had drafted them up, but-
Oh, for-
For the twenty, for the next meeting.
Meeting on the twelfth.
But-
By notifications, you mean-
Haven't done it yet.
The certified mail, the butter list? Is that what you're talking about?
The mail, the certified mailing.
Why don't you just have Patty check and then do whatever you need to do and we'll know when we get our packet, what happened.
Well, does the board have to vote to cancel a meeting or?
Let's put it this way, if we cannot move-
I guess the chair, that's right, the chairman can-
The chair can call it.
If we cannot move the July twelfth meeting, then let's ask the PLC plan to be moved out, as Barbara said, to the August meeting. And then we won't have a meeting on July the twenty-sixth.
That'll work better, I think.
One or the other.
We'll talk to David Priest and make sure that that's okay.
Because we all have that information from last week that was this thick and I haven't even looked at it myself yet. So, we still have more homework to do before we can listen to the SN, Southern Hampshire Planning Presentation.
Okay, so we'll keep next meeting and we'll try to push out the twenty-sixth and just have the one meeting in August. So, we'll have one meeting in July and one meeting in August.
You have nothing else in August at this time, Brian? August is open right now?
Vacation time. Surf's up?
Alright, so does everybody concur that that's a good way to move forward with the schedule?
Aye.
Yeah.
Alright, with that, we'll have a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Who made that motion? Phil? Phil and Mark. Motion to adjourn by Phil and Mark. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, chair votes yes.